... budget to order at 6:01 PM. Members President, myself, Mayan Morrow, Councilwoman Seal, Dylan Gearbox, Ms. McCallum, and Mayor Forten Talar. From City Staff, we have City Manager Campell, Clerk Royal, Treasurer Bennett, Deputy Treasurer McDonough, Parks Director Dr. Schrod, DPW Director Cordice, and I believe Chief Hart will be here momentarily. The rest of you in the audience this evening who welcome you, we would encourage you to sign in the back to my left. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended or as submitted unless there are amendments. As submitted, Mr. Gearbox? Thank you for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McCallum. All who are in favor of approving your agenda as submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I staff the motion, carry your hand. So we cut to public comments. I'm going to be exact, this isn't being afforded this time to be a common question. The City Council is public comment here. If there's any person who would like this page to be requested but not required, this page is the remaining address for the record. Are there any citizens comments? There are no citizens comments, then we'll proceed to the discussion portion of our agenda. We have two bullet points. The first is the FY '19 budget sewer, or water and sewer rates and capital improvement plan. And then we'll transition to talking about whole path street maintenance, pension, and other outstanding issues, questions, and concerns that council members have. I will refer back to an email I sent out earlier this morning. I am hoping to develop consensus on the budget that has been presented and prepared by staff so we can take corresponding action at our upcoming regular meetings. With that, do you have any comments, Mr. Campell? Or turn it over to Treasurer Bennett. Treasurer Bennett, you want to get on, why don't you go through water and sewer rates first? Then we'll address questions and concerns, and then I'll bring Mr. Cordice up and maybe the two of you together can talk about the capital improvement plan.
Okay.
And yes, please be sure to speak into microphones. When this issue came up at a meeting I had with Councilwomen Dylan and Mitchell this past week, please make sure your electronic device is, i.e. your phone, it's not your laptops you have, are away from the mics. They tend to interfere, and the same is true up until the day as one of you are in a regular meeting. So when you hear all that stat and feedback, it's generally because of cell phones, face the microphone. Thank you. As long as the green light is illuminated in the face, you may begin.
Okay. Whoa. Some of us have big enough mouth, but that wasn't necessary. So I believe you have received, I know you've received, the water and sewer rates that Joanne has prepared, and we kind of tried to simplify it a little bit this year to do the combined, to combine them to show you what the impact is going to be. As you're well aware of, our water rates are made up of the three charges, your billing charge, your consumption charge, and then your meter readiness to serve charge. So depending on the size of the business or the meter, the water bills will, the water bills will reflect that. So then on the second sheet, Joanne went through and did some averages for you. The top of that second sheet is the average that'd be calculated for a residential customer with the average consumption of 18,000 units. And there displays what the bill would be for that, and she went through and figured that, yes, 18,000 is the average. And then in the past, we've always tried to demonstrate what these show for our larger users, our industrial users. So there's the American soy and the Fresia, what the impact will be to them as well. And she has highlighted, you know, what the change, the effect will be as of June 1st. So, does anybody have any questions regarding the water and sewer rates? These are the rates that were plugged into the water and sewer budgets, and that is reflected in the budgets to show the revenues and such as that.
Very good. That's very interesting. Let me start to my left with Councilwoman McCallum, and then next we'll run, I'll start with Mr. Gearbox. Any questions for City Staff regarding water and sewer rates?
No question.
No question.
Thank you.
Mayor Forten Talar?
One little question about the 2021 projection. That looks really nice, lowering rates. Oh, wait.
FY '20 for?
Effective 20, June 2021.
Oh, well, at the end, well, yeah.
Yes, and that just leaves us room to grow, right?
Well, it takes into account, just to make it simple. It takes into the account the current year budget, and then similar to what I do with the general fund, I make projections, like wages and stuff like that, and projects. So we're kind of in touch with projects over the next two or three years, and then once you get further out, they're kind of sketchy. So that's why it looks really good.
Right.
But it might not necessarily be that way.
All right. That was what I was understanding.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Just to make sure I see it right, the residential customers are quarterly, the industrial customers are monthly, right?
These two industrial customers are monthly.
Okay.
The other industrials are quarterly as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Dylan?
So is there a reason why we're not smoothing, like why we're taking the big hit right now for '18? Or, you know?
Well, there are projects in there that are being smoothed out. The MDOT project is still in there. We had Ann Arbor Street, we had the Harris Street that was, came in higher than what was in the budget, the rate study, like the year that it actually happened. So I'm kind of smoothing that out. But then during last year's session, we kind of like, I got the impression that we didn't want to do that, cut ourselves short by smoothing out too many projects.
Okay.
So there is, there are some projects that are being smoothed out, but, you know, trying to recoup.
So basically, we're just taking a one-year big hit?
Um, no.
Those are the projects we know.
That are in the next year's budget, for sure.
So then, we can't say that in FY '20, '21, '22, that these are accurate, or these are, okay, so?
No, they are not.
Okay.
No. They are best estimates as of today.
Okay.
And projects happen, you know, things fail, other projects come up that all of a sudden need priority. So, yeah, they will change.
We're only approving the FY '19 rates.
Okay.
We do it each year.
Right.
But we're demonstrating to pass it.
Right. So for people to think that we're taking this gigantic hit this year and not going forward would be incorrect?
Right.
Okay. And then my second question is, in our bond paperwork for the meeting tonight, it talks about repayments from sewer fees. Is that calculated?
Yeah, the bond that's on the, on the agenda tonight.
Yeah. So is that figured into these numbers?
It's not in FY '19, because we are going to start drawing on that as the SRF project moves forward, the odor control project. Once we start drawing, the state will build an amortization schedule. So as of right now, we probably have a little bit of interest in FY '19. We probably won't pay it all, start paying it until '20, even '21.
Okay.
Depending, yeah.
We don't pay it until the project is completed.
It's completed, that's what I.
So it's not reflected in the numbers.
Right.
Right. It's not like we're getting the money in like a regular bond where we'd get it upfront, and that the day we get it, we have an amortization schedule. As we ask the state to reimburse us, they build up, you know, what we've borrowed so far, and they make an amortization schedule until it's finally done, and then you got a final set schedule.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mitchell.
That was my question about the, is this working? Is this thing on?
No.
No.
That, thank you. Oh, that was my question about the bond, and I couldn't work it out that it was in here, and that's good, because it's not.
There's a little bit of interest.
Okay.
But, but, yeah, there's no debt.
I was like looking for the, ooh, there it is, but it's, okay.
It's due next year.
Yeah, sure. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Mr. Gearbox?
Just understanding the rate increases. So we're talking the 21% versus, you know, the 25%. What have we normally been averaging in our past year increases?
Last year, I think we were slightly higher. I think we were like in 7.8% for the residential, yeah. So we're a little bit lower this year.
Am I looking at the wrong one? I'm looking at the first page, table T1, whatever. And it says bill charge per bill, and it says 21% change increase in the third column under effective 2018.
Right, that's just the bill charge. That's that five or $6 charge that you have on your quarterly bill. I mean, it looks like a big percentage, but it's such a small portion of your bill.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. I just want to understand.
Yeah, the consumption is the bigger, that's the actual charge per unit. That's going up 3.6%.
Okay. And then the increases that we have with the connection fees and all of those, are we still spreading that over like a five-year period or a three-year? You know, we approved a couple of years ago that some of us wanted a shorter period and others wanted a longer period.
For some of the projects? Yeah.
For some of the, well, no, for connection fees, for, yeah, for the big projects and so forth coming forward.
Well, the connection fee, the revenue on that, well, actually, I've got a plan from, Gary Rubel about, you know, the projected growth, and we kind of like came up with the growth by year on the development that he has. So I kindly build that percentage in and then calculate how many, you know, that comes to, and I actually calculate what the connection fee is going to be based on the rates that we have in place for that fiscal year.
Now, the reason why I bring that up was that issue that we were going to allow, because people were concerned that developers were going to be dissuaded to build in our city because our rates were going to go up high, and we stretched it out over a longer period of time.
The rate, yes, the rates that were, are in effect, we're doing over a four-year period.
Okay, so that's four years.
But that's, right, that's for the connection charges.
That's the ones.
Right, but that's not, this, it's not, it's a small part of this, this rate study?
Right, right. But I wanted to know what we were doing with that, because I still think that that could have been sped up, because of.
Oh, okay. I'm not sure if it's, was it four years that we were spreading it over? Yeah.
Kind of benefiting the developers.
Yeah, because we did have a lot of growth early on that we're not taking advantage of.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Ms. Bennett, Ms. McDonough confirm, so this will be an action item, win at our next company?
Yes.
Second meeting today. Thank you, ladies. Mr. Cordice, do you want to join us at the table, either seated next to Ms. McDonough or Ms. Bennett? We'll transition then to CIP. Who would like to begin? Bennett, do you want to begin?
So, just a reminder, I mean, there's not really a whole lot to talk about, but this is a living, breathing document, just the same as our budget is. As we project and try to go in, you know, knowing what next year budgets are going to be, the future years are always subject to change, and we do adopt this on an annual basis for this fiscal year. So the projects that are listed in this for FY '18 are private, projects that are reflected in the budget that you received for all funds, including streets, water, sewer, general fund, rec center, et cetera. Now, in the event that roads deteriorate, life happens, then we will amend the budget to reflect the current needs, which council would also have approve on, and then each year, you know, we readdress this document at this time each year.
Very good. And before I turn it over to Mr. Cordice, I do want to follow up just briefly on, I believe it was the last time we discussed a long-term strategy for growing infrastructure improvements and how we finance that was at the conclusion of your most recent gold strategy session with Kelly Petrock. And there seemed to be consensus to pursue a pay-as-you-go system. So one of the things that I will likely transpire is that we have a work meeting sometime in June. I want to work with staff to develop a fact sheet and give you a little bit more substance to digest as we hopefully plan in the, or plan for the upcoming years how we're going to meet our, our own infrastructure needs. So I just want to make sure you're aware that that's still on the horizon, something you need, you need to act upon if we're going to be able to finance the projects that are enumerated in the CIP. So, Mr. Cordice, with that, why don't you grab the microphone from Ms. Bennett? Take a little bit of time, and then we'll work our way around the table addressing questions if we're trying.
Well, so there, this is a pretty comprehensive plan that rolls in all the departments and, you know, different areas of responsibility. So there are rec center things in here, there are park things in here, there are various general fund things, major streets, local streets, water, sewer. So some of them I can comment on in detail, and other ones I can't. But to follow up your statement there on page 20, which is our local streets capital improvement plan.
Page 1.
Yep. The, I think the important, two important things here. The identified projects here are all, you know, good projects, necessary projects need to be done. They're a little bit light. There's, you know, other projects that could be done that are, you know, streets that are ready for reconstruction or will be within this six-year span. But if you look at the bottom line there, the fund balance, you can see within this six-year plan, it's at negative $1 million. So that makes planning these things difficult, and it really makes doing them difficult. So, so this is, this is a very valuable exercise. It's great to have project identified and, you know, to have us go through the prioritization and the thought process, but there's a fundamental problem getting in the, in the out-years.
Any additional comments from staff? There's a little bit of other questions. Mr. Gearbox?
I'll pass at this point.
Ms. Mitchell?
Mr. Cordice, thank you so much for putting this together. I think it makes it a little clearer for me, for my own, for my.
I'll come on in.
Oh, I'd like to thank the amazing Joanne McDonough.
Yeah, the layout of this and the clarity of the presentation is all Joanne's work.
That's to you, Mr. Cordice. Okay. All right, in all seriousness, thank you for, thank you for this format. I think it makes it easier. I just want to go back, so, you know, I remember all too well, Mr. Cordice, when you were telling us, you know, with this packet, we need to spend $1 million a year on streets. So when I look at, and that's local streets, is that right?
That's all streets. The $1 million is all.
Okay. So then, how are we looking when, when we're looking at page 20? How, how are we doing on that? Are we going to be maintaining our level? Are we, you know, with that?
Between, between local and major projects identified in the CIP, we are, I think, in almost every year proposing more than that. And that's kind of a reflection of just the projects that we identified. You know, if we're going to do Woodland Drive, it's, it's obviously from here to here that it needs to be done, and that's how big it is. And so in some years, we're north of that $1 million, other years, we're a little bit south of it. But in very broad brush, yes, this is a million-dollar-a-year plan.
Okay. All right. That was just my, you know, where are we in our lane towards that goal? That's all I need to know.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mitchell. Ms. Dylan?
Thank you. I guess I just want clarification. I think I talked about this at our last meeting. So how do you determine which roads are going to be done in which year?
There's, so there's multiple considerations that go into the project selection. The, usually, the most visible one is the condition of the pavement. So we assess all the roads mostly on an annual basis, do a condition assessment and track those from year to year. We have software that can take that, those data points and project them into the future so we have an idea of when different roads are going to hit a point where they need attention. Then we also track issues with the utilities. So we keep track of water main breaks. So if we see multiple water main breaks happening in one section, then we'll start looking at that for a water main replacement. Similarly, if we have a lot of sewer blockages or sinkholes, we'll try to look at that. With the Saw Grant, that process is getting more proactive. We've done, we've televised about 60% of the sanitary system and the storm sewer, excuse me. So that's, that's going to lay out a number of projects for those two utilities. And then we have a much less data-intensive water asset management plan that's coming together. That one's smaller because we didn't have grant funding to put it together, so. So the underground issues, the surface issues, then we also look at what category of street it is, how many cars are on it, is it eligible for federal funding? And so we always have in here a federal aid eligible project. And, you know, yeah, that's about it.
Okay.
Those, all those things. So it, you know, some of them are driven by the pavement, some of them are driven by the utilities. Most in this current plan are surface-conditioned driven with the underground utilities kind of tagging along.
Okay. So if you were to have five streets that are all equally as bad, I guess would be the easiest way to put it, how do you make that determination then? I guess what I'm trying to figure out in the end is, what happens in the meantime if one of your four streets, which is not part of your budget, has to be pushed up? I mean, how does that affect sort of, you know, what kind of a ripple does that cause?
Well, as Mickey Joe mentioned, this is a living document. It's, you know, most of these out-year ones can easily be, can slide a year or two either direction. You can't slide, you have to go through the design phase, so you can't slide that out. But if, you know, if it's a really significant pavement emergency, you could do a quick Melonfield-type project and ignore the underground, so you've, you know, fixed the surface. Or, yeah, you just, you rearrange and swap projects out. It's, so, and that's, that's kind of the situation where we are now, you know, back in the, you know, mid-'90s to 2008 period where we were spending close to that $1 million a year, we didn't have that situation, because we were keeping up with things. So we had, you know, a bunch of good roads, a bunch of medium roads, and a handful of, you know, fair to poor roads that would be addressed next year. So, so, you know, once we ran out of funding and, you know, started maintaining at a lower annual dollar amount, things have built up so that, you know, we are in that situation where we have a number of roads that are, you know, on the edge, and, you know, one bad winter, they could be a gravel road next year, so.
So then, if in a perfect world, you got your $1 million a year for roads, how long would it take you to sort of come almost up to normal? I mean, are you always going to be chasing that dog?
Well, in a certain sense, no matter how much funding you have, you're always, you're always going to be doing road projects, because, you know, they're not a, it's not a once-and-done. You don't build a road and then you're done with it forever. You, you build it, you maintain it, and then eventually you're going to have to, at a minimum, resurface it. So the, in that, in those projections that I presented with that street strategy, those were 10-year projections, and after 10 years, we got back to, I think, a majority good. You know, we were kind of around an average pacer of six or seven.
Right.
So with very, I think by year 10, we had nothing in the poor category. And, and, you know, and again, to follow a little bit more on that, you know, if suddenly we had $15 million, it would be hard to spend all that in one year in a community this size.
Just rip up every road.
Yeah.
Something.
So, so even, so again, even if funding was unlimited, it would still be a lengthy, multi-year process to get back to an average good condition.
Right. And then, just quickly, I don't understand the Saw Grant. Is that a one-and-done? Like, because I don't see it come back again.
It's a multi-year grant. I think it's a three-year cycle, and we're in year two right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. So 19's the last year.
And then you can, can you apply again, or is it?
No. It's a, it's a one-time, one-time grant. It's a very significant grant, but it will give us a process and a blueprint for the next several years of storm and sanitary maintenance.
Okay. That's it for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seal.
Do all the general office computers come out of the general government? Pardon me. Come out of the general government portion of the CIP?
Do the general.
Office computers?
For City Hall? Yes.
And police?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't see them anywhere, and I was just making sure that we had them somewhere in there. Thank you.
Well, computer, so this CIP document is for our capital improvements, which are, we usually categorize that as purchases over $5,000.
Okay.
So computers usually don't show up in there, they usually show up in the line item in the budget for those under $5,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Talar?
Thank you. Just a comment. I appreciate, I always appreciate seeing the CIP and the projections, and my overriding reaction was, you know, our, our needs far outstrip our projected resources, not only on page 20, but on all the pages. So I think we have serious work to do.
That was going to be my thought as well. Appreciate your work on this, and I'm looking forward to coming to some solutions on how we can fill that gap, so.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Gearbox and Ms. Dylan?
Earlier on, I sent an email to the city manager asking for some questions, and he responded, and I wanted to remember what he did answer and what I still had outstanding. For the most part, the only couple of questions I had was, I noticed somewhere where Wheeler Court had originally been proposed to be paved, and yet it's not on here any longer. It was in some other document. I think it was in the original budget. Is there a reason why that dropped off? I'd have to go back and pull which document, but it was kind of where, it was requests?
Wheeler Court is at, for those who aren't aware, Wheeler Court is off.
Lewis Street. I just happened to see it in the document. I thought, hmm, I didn't know if maybe it was pulled because it had to have.
I don't remember why that came off. We can check back.
Okay.
Clarification on that, maybe?
Because it seemed like it was a, kind of a priority, and it was off. The other thing, and I had mentioned to the city manager, was the Monroe Street Cemetery retaining wall, because that's progressively getting worse, but we patched it last time. I don't know how we're going to construct it, and I understand that it's out for bid or a quote to see what we can do to it, but is it just going to be mortaring and patching, or are we going to try and disassemble and repair them?
I think the, the quotes that we're going for right now are kind of an evaluation, and the question, is that, you know, kind of surface treatment sufficient? And you try to figure out what, what additional work needs to be done to prevent that from happening again, so.
Didn't it happen just like five or six years ago?
I think it was a little bit further back than that, but it's, yeah, so the last kind of parjing that went over it, somehow water has gotten behind that and, you know, freeze-thawed and knocked that off, so.
And I just would prefer that we spend money on that to fix it permanently and not necessarily have it. Because we have funds in there for that. And then the last thing, there were some new trails that were identified that we're doing in Brecken Park, and something, a new trail from, from, I guess it's with the new play structure to somewhere, and then it said a new trail to the library, and I just wasn't sure what that.
These were projects, I believe, that were selected by the Parks Commission, and Carla might want to chime in on those a little bit, but it's, the trail from the existing trail to the new play structure is just that. It's a short, little access trail, and one of the, one of the goals of that play structure was to be ADA accessible, and I think there might be some future effort for a, an ADA swing within there, basically a wheelchair swing. And then the other trail was part of the plan some number of years ago. I think maybe part of the original Library-Brecken Trail Plan to have a spur come off of that, kind of along the east property line of Brecken Park and head north, and then wrap around and connect to the existing trail, so you could basically do laps of the park.
Okay. How many, do we need to do any other maintenance on that trail at this point, or is it still in pretty good shape?
The existing trail is okay. I wouldn't want to roll it really down it, but I wouldn't want to roll it really anywhere, actually, but, but, yeah, it, so it's, I think it's walkable.
My concern is just making sure that we do include the preventable maintenance with that, because that would be an expensive replacement if we have to. Thank you.
Ms. Dylan, you have a couple other questions?
You know what? I found the answer to my question. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else on CIP? Yes, Ms. Mitchell?
I just had a quick question on page 16 about the Mill Pond Park small dog area. Can you talk about that? Can you talk about that project a little bit?
In, yeah, in broad terms. So, we built that dog park 2003, I think, and there have been people who love it, and there have been people who wish that it had fences on all four sides, and there have been people who bring small dogs there and have negative interaction with large dogs. So the, the basic idea is to create an area either adjacent to or within the existing park that's exclusively for small dogs, and I'm not sure how small, small is. It's probably be like 25 pounds and under, or something like that, but, so just a dedicated area for smaller dogs.
And can I ask a quick follow? So is that, so 25 pounds, I think for like the owner of a Chihuahua, like 25 pounds is huge, so I don't know, like, have you done any comparisons for?
No, I haven't. I don't know.
Okay.
Having a small dog here at a dog park is fairly common.
Okay.
And it's not necessarily 25 pounds, but it's, it's a smaller breed dog.
Right. Shih Tzu.
Yeah, terriers.
Okay. All right.
My dog weighs 80 pounds, so it's 25 sounds smaller to me.
Right. Okay. I just, I just want, we have a dog-heavy neighborhood, and that is a question, so thanks.
Okay. Thank you all. Let's transition then. Maybe it'll be a little bit more natural to move to street maintenance before we get a statement on OPEB and pension liability. Mr. Ford says, a follow-up to our discussion a week ago, you guys presented a sheet of some projects that actually could be done in construction season. One of the questions that I had asked is perhaps to identify some other potential projects, particularly our local streets. Do you have any additional information or projects that in theory could be added to the list of?
A few. So last time, we talked about Kevling and South Ann Arbor Street, and I think the consensus was the, the more, not a full melon fill of South Ann Arbor, but a kind of a selective one with some drainage improvements. Another project that since identified is North Ann Arbor, north of Woodland, so it's basically the western boundary of the Methodist Church. That, there's no utility issues there, and I think that would be a straightforward melon fill.
Give an approximate cost on that?
Somewhere around $88,000.
Does that include the intersection?
No. It stops at the stop bar. So it's the stop bar north.
Right.
So our jurisdiction goes all the way to the north, north property line of the Methodist Church, so.
Talking about in the intersection where it's all rut?
It does not, this would not address the rutting, and then there's, there's rutting south of the intersection for several hundred feet also. This would not address that. That's another one of those projects that I would need borings and some geotechnical analysis to fully understand before going ahead with. Not a street project, but a project that's been on the list forever, the, the boat launch loop at Mill Pond Park. You know, that's, that's basically, you know, when we have any excess paving material, we bring it down there because there's always a place for it, and it's essentially just a pile of patches. Yeah. I think that would be around $42,000. And then I went looking for some things similar to what we did on Bennett Street last year, where, you know, there's generally good pavement, and then perhaps a small section of particularly bad pavement. And I didn't find any really good candidates for that. I, I mean, I found some spots on Russell Street and a few on North Lewis. The North Lewis ones are pretty questionable, because while they are bad, they're surrounded by fairly broken up pavement as well. But pretty inexpensive in the big picture, you know, what I saw in North Lewis, if we combine it with another project of looking at about $5,000. The Russell Street was a little bit bigger, maybe $10,000 there.
Questions for Mr. Ford? Ms. Dillon?
So how big are these plots? So let's start with, like, North Ann Arbor, north of Woodland. How, how big is the strip?
It's, it's about 750 feet. And then at the intersection, it's four lanes, four plus lanes wide due to the drop lanes and turn lanes, and most of it's only two lanes.
And then South Ann Arbor, peaks, right? Small peaks, or how far out are they? Because you're talking about where it's already patched, correct?
Yeah, the very rough spots where there's been a lot of pothole filling over the past several years. It's a good, I don't, I don't have the dimensions of that one with me, but I mean, it's, it, you know, it's from Pleasant Ridge to Henry is the area that we're focusing on. There's a small stretch just south of Pleasant Ridge that would be included. It's, you know, it's more than half of the northbound lane, plus maybe a quarter of the southbound lane in between those two streets.
And then, like, Woods and Russell?
Those are just spots.
Those are just spots.
Yeah.
And, one of the things I didn't see in the CIP, it sort of has completely fallen off the radar, is the drainage issue at Stoneford Park. Is there ever going to be an opportunity to fix that basin?
Yes.
I mean, it's still fencing, it's been up for two years now.
Yeah. That's, that's one that I anticipate taking care of in-house, and that's, you know, there's always a, a battle for manpower, so that's.
I mean, because that's a field.
Yeah.
And so I just want to kind of find out, I mean, that's just something I'm very familiar with. I'm sure there's other issues, sorry, around, that I just wanted to kind of see, making sure that we're looking at the really big picture, because like something like that doesn't fall into anybody's bucket, it just sort of seems to fall off. And I just want to make sure, are there other issues like that?
I mean, there certainly are other drainage projects that have, you know, been identified and have been tentatively funded and unfunded, and, you know, so there's, and that's one of the, going to be one of the advantages of the SAW grant and the management plans that come out of that, is that those projects will be kind of enumerated and on a list, and hopefully with a schedule, and then we can start budgeting and planning for those better.
Okay.
Ms. Dillon?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giribon.
Yeah, just to chime in on Ms. Dillon's, I've seen that drain and that catch basin or whatever it is, and it has failed spots in it that I'm afraid a child could slide down into it.
Yeah, they've gotten really bad.
It really is bad. I think if we need to put the money aside in this year's budget to hire someone to fix it or whatever, it's just one of those ones that, because of the way it is and the design of it, and as big as it is, it just, I don't know. I, I just see that as something scary, and it was a year ago that I saw it, and it looked like it was undermined by animals or something, and partially, and part of it is just deteriorated, so I would concur on that as somehow to get that fixed, whether it's in a contract or a DPW, but I think it's a liability issue that we need to address. Any other thing, just real quick, is the, I'd prefer the boat launch, just like we did with Salt Park, Salt Spring Park via grant, other than to spend the money on fixing that at this point in time, because I think we could probably make a big improvement on that with some kind of a DNR grant, because it is on the water again.
Ms. Dillon, thank you. Ms. Mitchell?
Just to speak to that, the, I'm the liaison for the Raisin River Watershed Council, and they have been assisting in writing grants, and so I believe it's the city of Adrian that put in five, I think they are kayak launches, and I believe the intention is to work with the Leslie Nature, Leslie Needhammer Nature Preserve. And so I just want to mention that while we're talking.
Very good. Follow up on that. Okay, there's nothing further regarding some, regarding street maintenance in this upcoming construction season? Let's transition then to a brief comment from the city finance office on OPEB and pension liability. Good evening. Do you would like to share this benefit, or?
It's still there. Just as we are working towards the end of the fiscal year, as a reminder, when we are in excess of our fund balance policy, well first, let's back up. Let's, let's remind ourselves that in this fiscal year, proposed FY '19, there was a additional 1% contribution that the employees are making towards their defined benefit, which was a significant savings to the city, and then next year, there will be another 1%. So those are going to have an impact on the actuarial. We haven't had those numbers yet, but that will have a, I wouldn't want to say a significant, but it'll, it'll have an impact on the actuarial at the end of this fiscal year, and again at the end of next fiscal year. The other thing that we have, MERS has been very fortunate in their earnings this year, and have made some substantial earnings. Todd, do you remember what I told you?
13.6.
13.6 was their average earnings, so that is a plus as well towards our, and that will benefit both of ours, because while MERS is our pension, we also have our retiree health funding vehicle, which is our OPEB, is also invested at MERS, so those are well too. And then, taking briefly, talking about OPEB, we also had earlier, the council chose to have the retirees that were eligible to move to the Medicare plan, and we have seen a significant savings again in our budget, and that has not been reflected, but will be reflected going forward on our OPEB liability. We also have been working, not so much the last couple of months, because we've been a little occupied with the budget, but we've been working with CBID, CBIZ, who is an actuarial company, and they are doing an actuarial for the other post-employment benefits for a two-year, so that we're in compliance with the GASB. So the city has taken some proactive steps on both measures, the OPEB and the pension. We continue to pay the, the, it's escaping me. Instead of the, when they changed all of the, right, when they, when they changed all the increased assumptions, there was an option to phase that in or to take the full amount. The city has, in the last two years, been able, well, since it's been available, the city has taken the full amount, and we have prepaid that, and so our interest is being earned as of July 1st each year. In the past, what was happening, we were making monthly payments, so now we take the premium for the entire pension and pay it in July, so that we benefit from that interest. And there's also some discussion with MERS that, about possibly doing the same with our OPEB payment, so that we could be earning that payment too. So, those are the steps we're taking and continually reviewing to see what we can do.
Good. Questions for Ms. Bennett regarding OPEB liability or pension liability? Mr. Giribon, please.
As I might recall, when I mentioned before, the idea was that I saw us basically building some kind of operating recurrence in our budget from those savings that you just identified, the, the 1% and that $80,000. And how did we do that? We didn't, did we? Because we basically absorbed it in other projects for the current operating budget, if I'm thinking that correct. So the idea would be is we reduce some other project by $80,000, and we'd end up having to put, that was my concern, and what I wanted to do was, is we identify these particular savings for these liabilities that are going to be recurring. We should be putting that money towards that, and not necessarily making these giant one-time payments, a combination of, I shouldn't say not one time, but it's that kind of recurring increase that I think, even though I know it's a different way of approaching things, it just makes sense. That's the reason we made those changes, and I want to reassure the individuals that are taking those hits, that that money has been directed towards maintaining that liability for the employees and the retirees. And so having that as consistent contribution is above and beyond what we know we have to do, but making these giant one-time payments, I know that can be helpful, but I think there needs to be a mix. It's not necessarily making one big payment, but it's the idea of making this a recurring contribution above and beyond what we're required to do. And I'm still going to advocate for that, even though it's going to reduce over a period of time, I still think when we do those kind of changes, it helps reinforce why we made those decisions and why we wanted to reassure employees that we're looking out for them, and I want to make sure that's happening in a more identified budget period. That's just my.
So, I, I totally agree with that, and that's one of the discussions that I, I believe we are having to take this year's fund balance. The $80,000 for this year was needed to close the budget, so that, so either way, it was either taking that and using some fund balance dollars for ne, for this next year's budget and putting it all towards this year's, but now, I think that is a position that we're having to put that one-time payment, maybe that's the dollar amount we want to use, or maybe we want to put more towards that. But yes, I, that is part of our fund balance policy as well.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we don't let that, you know, we could make that change in this budget, we just would have to cut something else out of our, I know the idea is we're trying to balance our budget within our operating revenues and everything. It's just how we do that and how we make sure that happens is the catch-up, and I, if this is going to be a part of the thing that we put this in place for next year's budget and use fund savings for this year, I, I appreciated that, and that's what I'd like to see happen.
Please.
Just as a note, if we are to, you know, majority of the lion's share, probably, what, 85% of our budget is people, as, as they are typically in municipal operations, so that's, if, I'm not suggesting one way or the other, but, but that would be to, to do the $80,000, would, the question would be, do we reduce staffing, or do we, and then of course, when I say reduce staffing right now, right, we have the one new, in the current draft, they have the one new DPW position. Or do you reduce or eliminate some of their non-personnel item?
And that's kind of where I think we'd be looking at. The issue is, I'm also seeing that we're, our revenue should be going up because of the additional taxable property that we put on available, and assessments and whatever. So I know that we're going to have additional incremental income coming in to help cover those expenses. I just don't know where that is, and not necessarily jeopardizing salaries or, or people, but I think it's, it is taking out and maybe reducing some of these special projects that we're doing. And I agree. I, I mean, it is that, but I, I know my anticipation is, is that I think that we're going to have additional revenue coming in related to our properties, which will cover the cost of inflation, the salary increase and everything, above and beyond what we're going to dedicate as an annual contribution towards these pensions. So I, I don't know if we have to sacrifice a lot of things, because what we'd have to do is worry about it if we have a year when the recession hits, like we did before, whatever. But at this point in time, we don't see that happening. I think we're really pretty tight in what we're doing, and anticipating all that additional property coming aboard, so it's a balance. I know it is, and I anticipate it, but I'd like to see how we would lay that out and then actually communicate that in a document, so that we can see it as a council and be able to communicate that and say, what are our opportunity costs in the event that we had to cut something else, so.
Very good. Any other questions regarding pension or OPEB? Well, then let me, maybe Mr. Ford, it might be helpful if you join us at the table again, because I could envision additional questions regarding your department's street maintenance specifically. Can you remind me, because I do not have the spreadsheet in front of me, the approximate cost to a resurfacing project on North Ann Arbor Street from Woodland to City Forest? What did you cite 10, 15 minutes ago?
66.
$88,000.
$88,000. And again, the approximate cost for a limited patching on South Ann Arbor from Henry to, was that 45?
I think it was more than that.
66, I think.
66.
I'm right.
And Kevling was lower, correct? Kevling was, Kevling was 66. Kevling was 66. So I'm sorry, what was the price then for South Ann Arbor?
Sixty-six and 111.
It was 111. There was two options.
Yeah, sixty-three thousand for sections and 111 for the entire block, or what my notes say? Does that sound about right?
Yeah. With that, the sixty-three, I would suppose increasing that makes the range.
That's enough. And Ms. Bennett or Ms. McDonough can remind me what, this is obviously, these are pre-audit numbers, but what are we anticipating as a sum in the unassigned fund balance?
In your memo, it was reflected of approximately 600,000.
Well, let me, I'm going to address the budget in its totality and then make some specific comments to items that generated some discussion or debate amongst, among the city council members. First of all, I am strongly in favor of moving forward with the draft budget that has been presented by staff and discussed by city council. Three items that I'll touch on. One, an additional full-time employee at the Department of Public Works. That's something I advocated for in my January State of the Sea address. My position has not changed. I think if we're going to be sincere about our commitment to maintain our assets and our infrastructure, we have got to have the appropriate number of folks on the front lines to do the work on a daily basis. So strongly in support of that addition to our budget. I'm also strongly in support of an SRO, which Chief Hart and I discussed again today. I do want to remind my colleagues that if the budget is adopted in its current form, a contract and proposal with the schools would come back for subsequent council actions. Is that correct, Chief?
That is correct.
And again, as I stated at the last meeting, I'm not a parent of school-aged children. I no longer have a family member who works closely near schools. But if I did have children in the district or if I had a loved one who was employed there or frequented our buildings on a regular basis, I would feel much better knowing that there was consistent police presence in our school buildings. That's a great way to educate our young people and make sure that they develop strong relationships and learn to respect those men and women where they were born. As it relates to the farmer's market, my position has not evolved from our last meeting. I think that the farmer's market is a valuable community asset. And while we could lament the current state of affairs, I think it's critical that we preserve that asset but also work to re-handset it. So I cited a number of things at our last meeting, including additional fundraising, more outreach and marketing, working to recruit additional vendors, and having conversations with Celine Main Street, downtown business owners and other community stakeholders to see if there are additional partnerships. But I think a infusion of a few extra dollars is prudent this year. It's probably not something I would support in perpetuity. And this is, I'd like to revisit in a year's time to see if we are, to see if the farmer's market is on a more stable upward trajectory. But I do appreciate the work that the staff and the volunteers at the farmer's market have done to maintain this asset. And it is an asset. And I think our community members value that asset. I think that's really critical. As it relates to the unassigned fund balance, I would be in favor of doing two additional infrastructure projects this year. Let me first say, Mr. Fordyce, I appreciate you sharpening your pencil and adding a few projects and taking a look at the inventory. And while I appreciate the inclusion of a boat launch at Milcon Park, that certainly to me doesn't take precedence over the many roads and streets that are in desperate need of repair or resurfacing. So my inclination would be to pursue the limited patching along South Ann Arbor from Henry to Buzzard Bridge Drive. And I'm really up in the air. I would probably lean a little bit more towards spending the $90,000 to resurface North Ann Arbor Street from Woodland to the city limits. Mr. Fordyce, you and I talked briefly about this on Friday. That is a key gateway into the city of Celine. It's heavily trafficked. And when you enter the city of Celine, I don't want your first thought to be that the condition of our homes are abysmal. So I think that it would be proved inappropriate to resurface that as well. You know, if council were more adamant on doing Kevlin, there's an argument to be made. There's an argument to be there, to be made with that. And I certainly wouldn't sleep over the inclusion of Kevlin at the absence of North Ann Arbor. So if my math is correct, then we would be doing a, assuming this position prevails, and it may or may not, we would be doing a project on North Ann Arbor Street at approximately $90,000 and South Ann Arbor at $70,000. Is that correct, Mr. Fordyce? Because you bumped that number up from low sixties to seventies. Given some remaining issues, so that'd be about 160,000. And of course, the remaining balance, which Ms. Bennett has been very articulate about, the remaining balance in the unassigned fund balance, we would not know what that dollar amount is until subsequent to the audit. But I would be in favor of dividing that and making a large additional contribution to both OPEB and to our pension liability. Again, not glamorous, not a glamorous and sexy way to invest dollars, but absolutely critical that we continue to manage and remain cognizant of the city's liability costs. That was a bit abstract in the long run, but I think I touched on a number of important things. Ms. McLeod, can I transition to you to get your thoughts on the budget? Or any of these items that we have discussed with some level of frequency over the past long?
I think first and foremost, for me, I think the farmer's market, while I, you know, I don't want to see it going forward as the city subsidizing it, I think it's critical that we maintain it, at least in the short term. So I think that's, to me, is a no-brainer, that we need to keep that. The SRO officer, I'm really looking forward to someone that has kids in the school and then just having the experience of having an SRO at Pittsfield. I see what a value that is. And I'm looking forward to what that position can do for the community. Also, again, with the DPW position, I mean, we were just talking about it tonight with the project with the drain and how, you know, things haven't been getting done because you don't have the resources. I think it's critical that we invest in the resources if we can to make that happen. So. And then as far as the unassigned fund balance, my preference would be the Celine and Arbor to Buzzard Bridge stretch and then Kevlin. But again, I can see either the North Ann Arbor or Kevlin. Not really have my heart set on one or the other of that. And then putting the rest towards the OPEB and pension.
Well, Ms. Har, won't you use the microphone in front of you? The light is brighter on the base of that.
We're apparently using these microphones too much.
Okay. So I will start out, I won't, I won't repeat the mayor's points. I agree completely with all of them. So I won't, I won't belabor those except for, I'll mention a little bit about two of them. One of them would be the street projects. I quite often come into Celine from the north, on North Ann Arbor Street. And that stretch just north of Woodland is really hideous. So I, my preference would be, I also go to Tim Hortons a lot. And if I have to choose between the two, I would choose North Ann Arbor Street over Kevlin for the project. And then I also wanted to say about the farmer's market, I'm also very much in favor of supporting the farmer's market this year to give them, the farmer's market staff and volunteers and vendors a chance to assess the market, to look at best practices, to look at ways of strengthening, expanding it, breathing space also for looking for other funding and support going forward. I think, I think that is the very least we can do. I believe, well, okay, so I'll stop with that sentence there. I have received lots, lots of people have reached out to me personally about the farmer's market, perhaps because I was quoted as screaming in the Celine Post on this topic or wanting to scream. And so lots of people have reached out to me. And of course, everyone, as you might expect, has been very positive about continuing to support and expand and grow the farmer's market. And the comments have been on a variety, in a variety of, on a variety of topics. One, it's, is the concern about food quality and accessibility or the accessibility of excellent locally grown food downtown enhancement. Also, the image of the city. I had someone say to me, how stupid would we look if we got rid of the farmer's market? Not to put too fine a point on it. And comments in social media have been, with one exception, all positive, the ones I've seen. I have not been on social media really researching this. So. I think compared to other cities, at least some other cities, we give the farmer's market very little financial support in comparison to others. So I don't think we're being, we would not be being profligate with our funds. And I think that a couple of years ago, Matt Zahn came to the city with some proposals about, about the farmer's market, including changing location. And we sort of focused on that. But some of the things he talked about were things that were happening in other farmer's markets that, that we weren't able to do or weren't happening in the farmer's market here. And I think in my memory of this, at least as a council, we kind of passed over those suggestions and those insights and comments that he offered. And I think we missed an opportunity there. We missed an opportunity to, a leadership opportunity to help the farmer's market move forward. And I think that the time to do that was, well, it would have been great to do that then. And I think it's our responsibility to do it now. So I fully support putting some extra money in the farmer's market this year. Thanks.
I too am in favor of the proposed balanced budget that's been brought forward from the city. I like all the things that are in it. I was somewhat taken aback by the subsidy to the farmer's market. I think it's an important thing to do to keep the farmer's market going. I think we need to encourage the farmer's market though to look at either reducing or eliminating any subsidy. That's a future effort, I would think. But for the time being, I support the budget the way it's presented. In terms of the roads, I'm really, I don't travel North Ann Arbor that much. I do travel Kevlin. That influenced my, my perception that Kevlin should be fixed. I don't, I have no real axe to grind one way or the other. So I will go with whatever the majority wants or whatever Mr. Fordyce thinks is the most appropriate.
But you are, you are amenable to a limited patching along South Ann Arbor?
Yes, absolutely there. And I'm going to be totally silent about the OPEB and pension.
Okay. Well, we'll start with the roads. And I think that, to be honest, we're just selectively picking what works best for us. I think that Mr. Fordyce and his department should be making that decision as to road condition and what they deem to be the most important projects to be done. Yeah, I go to Tim Hortons all the time too. I love to see that road smooth. But I'm also on, you know, North and South Ann Arbor Street all the time. You know, you're looking at fixing a chunk of North Ann Arbor Street to go through an intersection to just be on what feels like a dirt road at times. So I don't know if that really is enhancing the gateway to Celine. But like I said, I don't feel as though I'm qualified to make that decision as to which roads should take precedence. And then as far as the farmer's market goes, I realize it's a nominal amount that we're talking about in a very big picture of a budget. But at the same time, I want to be cautious about what we're doing. The farmer's market is absolutely, positively an asset to our community. I think most of us go to it year-round. But what I don't want to see is it growing beyond its means. Right now, the cooking demonstration portion is fully funded under a grant. And if they want to expand to that, I think that's fine. I think that the staff needs to find a way to work their hours within the parameters of the job that they are, that they have and the budget that they're given. And that can be through utilizing resources, partnering up with other agencies and finding other mechanisms for that. I'm just a little weary of heading down a path of perpetual subsidies. Right now, we're saying, well, we don't want it to be, you know, perpetual, but we're not giving any kind of deadlines. And so at this point, it's just going to go on. And what's to say that next year it won't be more and the year after that, maybe it'll change. But there's only so much growth that the farmer's market can have in its current location. So until we're willing to look at another location, you're going to only have X amount of vendors and people that can be in that area. And I also did want to mention that I am not comfortable making a decision. We received numerous documents between three o'clock and, between two o'clock and four o'clock this afternoon. I have not adequately reviewed all of them and I would feel as though I was making a decision in haste. Thank you. Oh, as far as, I'm sorry, as far as OPEB, I did not ask earlier as to where other similarly situated communities stand in their liabilities. I mean, are we sort of on level with what other communities are contributing? Is there any kind of benchmarking?
I wouldn't even be able to guess. I can try to find that answer out for you.
I think that would be appropriate. If I may, Councilwoman Dillon may recall that when President Moszynski was here to provide the legislative update, she actually stated for the record that she would have access to this data that while we have a significant outstanding liability, we are far better along than many of the municipalities in the state.
Right. And what I'm concerned with is, it's obviously a debt that's going to have to be paid and acknowledged. What I don't want to do is get too far ahead of the curve and then have the state step in. Because at some point, the state's going to have to own up and they're going to have to, to do something about this because there's so many municipalities underwater.
With respect, what, what action have you seen from the state over the last 25 years which would lead you to believe that they would step in until this point? I say that respectfully.
Well, the hole's getting deeper. Everyone's going to drown if the state doesn't step in. So, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I too was unable to dedicate time after 3:00 PM to look at documents. I just have some family things going on that I think there's information that came in about the farmer's market. I absolutely believe that the market is an asset. I think that Ms. Easley, you know, I look at her numbers, her, the growth in daily vendor charges, for example, is incoming. I think that's proof that she is working in the right direction. Mr. Har talked about, could we capture some of the ideas from the market discussion a while ago? I believe Mr. Zahn was in a list, I glanced at it right before the meeting. I believe he's on the advisory committee. Is that correct? He's nodding, yes. For the recording, he is nodding. So I think what I, I don't want the market to go away. It looks like there are some external forces that are changing. And I think it would be great to ask the advisory group if, if we could have a quarterly update as far as their, their ideas for, for directions to go and things to try. I'm a little unclear still about some of the expense line items. I think I asked Mr. Campbell for clarification because there's a manager wage. But then I believe there are other wages within the market assistance. I had a question within the grant funding. There are wages built in there. So I, I just wasn't clear on what is of this chunk of money, what's wages? It's still our money. And, and I want the equipment to be protected and used. You know, I, I can see a lot of interest from having the chef. I think that's a, a good idea to bring forward. So, the, I too have had a lot of people discuss, both in face-to-face, on social media, a few by email. They value the market. And, and my comment was, you know, yes, and the Tuesday market is going away. And, and so, you know, that's, that's an increase of hours, an increase of equipment or, or materials. I just don't feel like I really have a solid idea on it yet. And, and when I stated that concern that we're spending taxpayer money that's not ours, the people I talked to said, oh, yeah, yeah, you should look at that. I've expressed at this table concern that our departments, more than one department shows a lot of growth in their expenses. And it, it still feels like we're hanging on by our fingernails. And so, for me, my priorities have been road repair, retirement benefits, streets. And I, I'm not prepared to say, yes, this draft budget is exactly where I'd like it to go. Because I think there's, you know, we had talked about growth in the Department of Public Works. Now, we've got another person coming on and working with an SRO in the Police Department. I, I am just a more cautious person when it comes to budgeting. And I would be more comfortable if our expenses were a little bit lower and our investment in streets a little bit higher. So, that's, well, I, I will leave it tonight.
Very good. Ms. Dearbaugh?
In general, for most of the budget, I'm in favor of it. We're gonna be increasing staffing by, I believe, 1.25 FTEs, 0.25 being the Police Department. But in addition to having the SRO officer, it's gonna free us up. So, I think we're gonna have actually more than that in terms of, it'll be a wash in theory of having additional police, being able to do other opportunities here and having the schools basically take over some of the activities that we've always provided. So, I'm encouraged by that change and that additional cost. I still believe that we need to have our study done that would actually do a whole organizational review to determine what is a proper staffing, what other opportunities can we do to improve ourselves. But I do believe if we're gonna be doing all of these additional road improvements and things, I'll agree with the mayor, that hopefully those individuals will be able to redirect their activities towards maintaining our parks and our streets and our uptown and our banners and our, everything else that I could put on that list. And I know is a drag upon Jeff's resources and have to continue to admit those are the things that are taking up our time. As for, and I mentioned the SRO. As for the streets, I'm gonna kind of differ with everyone here a little bit. I agree with North Ann Arbor Street. I think that could be fixed. When it comes to South Ann Arbor Street, I would rather do the whole section of Henry to Pleasant Ridge than to just do three-quarters of it or 60% of it. And I know that means more money coming out of the fund balance, but the money's there in the fund balance to fix that road, to resolve that problem and spend money so that we don't have to go five years from now and re-grind it up and do repetitive work, repetitive work. The other, and that, so that mentions, I would like to see a full stretch of South Ann Arbor Street done, plus the component of North Ann Arbor Street. Because I agree, I thought that was gonna be partly county money that was gonna help with that. Otherwise, I'd rather see North Ann Arbor Street and Kevling. So, it's a toss-up here for me. But the other thing I would like to add is $25,000 to do the patching and repairs where we think that could be a benefit. And that comes out of our fund balance, too. We've got money there. We can fix some of these things. And we've got to resolve these problems. I'm tired of seeing this stuff not happen. I've been driving over potholes on that North Lewis Street for six years. And, and it's getting worse and worse. I don't care where you fix it, just have that money available to do that. And now that we're adding staff, I think we should be able to do that in that piece.
Can I come in real quick, Mr. Dearbaugh?
Sure.
Mr. Fordyce, can you remind me, because I don't have the budget in front of me, the line item version? You do have some money in your budget for limited patching and repairs. Is that correct?
I want to enhance it.
Yes, in both major and local?
And local professional services. I think I increased that to 20, each of those lines, 25,000 over last year. So, I think each is 75 now. And that, so that includes patching, crack fill, pavement markings, you know, multiple contracted street maintenance items.
It was, it's 50 in this current business unit.
I think that's right.
So, is that, that's fine. So, is that sufficient to cover these issues that we were just talking about?
I mean, that could be used for those couple of spots on, on North Lewis and, and Russell that identified. There's, those are definitely streets that need more attention in the near future. But this could take care of some trouble spots.
Just, I want to see some more work being done on roads and necessarily anything. Now for the farmer's market. I'm the one that, yes, did want to have people screaming because I was the one raising this issue a year and a half ago and addressed that we were gonna have this problem. When I looked at the budget and the business plan for it, it suggested that we were gonna raise $13,000 in donations to support this operation. This year, it shows $1,000. I do not want to see the farmer's market leave. I want to see it function like a Chelsea market does and like some of the other small towns that actually have the staff and volunteer. They use their DDA to support it. They have their manager that could actually support it. We have a Main Street manager to support it. What I do have a concern about is that the model coming forward not only increased hours, it cut half a day, it cut the other day out of it. This is not an optional, this is not a, a model that works. It worked for 16 years with one manager and who in the last five or six years ran two markets. And I agree, she provided some volunteer time, but that model worked. And the reason this current model doesn't work is because we had individuals that were dissatisfied with the way that model was working. And at this point, two years later, we have a major problem. And I am not saying that this is something that we can just throw money at and continue to do so. And so, what I want to see forward is a plan, perhaps with Main Street becoming its oversight of it. I would rather see us only fund it through the continuation of October and whatever happens with winter. This is just another approach of simply moving and continuing to move things that we have to figure out how we're gonna fund those. This is no different than we put the pressure on the rec center, no different than the pressure we put on the Celtic Festival. All of those have stepped forward. We've continued to provide support for them, but they're operating better now and they're operating effectively. So, what I would like to see is just funding through October for the budget. And I would prefer this to be a separate issue that we vote upon and not necessarily hold up our entire budget.
Very good. Okay. So, just so that we're, in terms of funding request for the farmer's market, it appears that there's consensus, I believe these three and myself, who would support the additional contribution this year. Is that correct?
Correct.
At least one who, who would not favor that, these were the entire 12 months. And some folks who would prefer to think about it and have an opportunity to review some information that was provided late this afternoon. Let, let's do this with the, the farmer's markets. It's apparent that we have more votes to move forward. And while there may be a disagreement on, on funding, I don't think there's a disagreement in terms of what the problems are and what we need to address with a variety of community stakeholders. So, Mr. Dearbaugh just addressed some. I mentioned earlier outreach, marketing. I would like to see more vendors at the Saturday market. I offered at the last meeting to assist with corporate fundraising, which is, as Mr. Dearbaugh just alluded to, an approach that we utilized with the Celine Celtic Festival and has proven to be very successful. And it's helped us in innumerable ways. So, I think in the, the short term, Mr. Campbell, I think your office should, should probably take the lead on organizing some meetings with some downtown business folks, property owners, Celine Main Street, the volunteers and staff of, of the farmer's market to talk about outreach, to talk about marketing, talk about fundraising, to put this on a more sustainable trajectory. And just so, just to eliminate confusion, because this was referenced earlier, it would be my perspective that, you know, I don't want to mention having quarterly reports. I think that's, that's reasonable. I would see the objection for that. But I would also like to have a, a, a very holistic discussion in a year's time to see if we've been able to move that pendulum. Because, I mean, I prefer that the way we're supporting the farmer's market this year is not a model that's sustainable or appropriate in perpetuity. But to get us over this hump, I think is, I think is reasonable, I believe, for the majority of council of Congress. Do you feel like you have sufficient direction on, on that particular issue? Mr. Dearbaugh, I want to jump back to something that, that you said. So, I was kind of making a tally here of infrastructure projects. It appears from my notes that we do have consensus to do a fixed Jeff on North Ann Arbor from the intersection at Woodland to the city limits. There also appears to be consensus that we do something along South Ann Arbor. I threw out a, a more limited or more cautious solution, but I'm always eager to spend more money on roads if my colleagues concur. So, Mr. Dearbaugh suggested, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dearbaugh, you would favor the more complete fix along South Ann Arbor from Henry to Pleasant Ridge. Mr. Fordyce, again, I don't have that memo from last week in front of me. What was the cost of that?
111.
I had that one estimated at 111, but similar to the limited one, I'd want to add about $7,000 drainage improvements to that. So, 118.
So, we're basically looking at for both projects approximately 200,000. North Ann Arbor and South Ann Arbor, if we pursue a complete fix?
Yeah, yeah, more like 210.
210, okay. What are your thoughts?
I wouldn't have any issue with that. I think, I mean, if you're gonna fix South Ann Arbor, I think doing it right and doing a more comprehensive, if there's money to do it, makes sense. And I don't have any issue with it.
Mr. Harv?
I have, so, what's under, a question about what's underneath South Ann Arbor Street? If we spend more money to fix more of the road, are we covering up bad or aging, risky infrastructure underneath?
No. So, that, that's one of the reasons that South Ann Arbor is on this list in the first place is that it was reconstructed. So, it has a, a good limestone base and the, the water and sewer were, the water main was replaced. I think the bulk of the sanitary sewer was replaced at that time. So, would want to look at catch basins. Catch basins always need repair. You know, so, this is, either way we look at it, it's a good candidate for this kind of pavement treatment because of that, because we did the underground work in the recent past.
Thank you. It's just me. It's just me. Okay. So, and what, can you remind me again of the reason you were recommending the lower cost, less extensive option? Was it simply because of the lower cost or was there another strategic reason?
Primarily the lower cost. So, South Ann Arbor Street is, is a road where we have pavement that's aged but still not terrible with sections that are terrible. So, the smaller scope was to remove the, the really bad parts. It definitely, you know, overall would be a better, higher quality, smoother riding project if we did the whole thing.
I'm okay with the whole thing.
Kathy?
I am also okay with the whole thing. As I said before, I leave it more to Mr. Fordyce's discretion.
Ms. Dillon, any thoughts?
As Mr. CEO just said, I think that Mr. Fordyce and his department is best to make that decision. But I am in favor of spending the money.
Ms. Mitchell?
I'm wholeheartedly in favor of spending money on roads. Quickly, did we talk about Mills and Bennett? Was that?
We did not.
We did not.
Real quick, then we'll jump to that for just a moment.
Okay.
We have just a few minutes before we have to adjourn and convene to a regular session. So, Mr. Fordyce, I'm here in consensus then to pursue resurfacing of North Ann Arbor and the more complete fix on South Ann Arbor from Henry to Pleasant Ridge. Okay? I think it's close to, as close to unanimous as we're gonna get. Thank you all, Mr. Dearbaugh.
I appreciate everyone considering that. I think that's a, a great opportunity and thanks.
We should try and one-up each other more often. We might get one more guy.
Let's spend a lot.
I like that. Did you want to comment briefly on Mills and Bennett?
So, I, I just wanted an update. Mills and Bennett hasn't been done thus far because there's infrastructure below that has to be coordinated with repairs. Is that correct?
The roughly southern half of Mills was reconstructed along with storm sewer improvements, I don't know, five, eight years ago. And it's the north half that is not included in this Mill and Phil list because there's additional storm sewer work that needs to be done. So, it's in the CIP.
Yeah, I, I thought I saw it and I just wanted to.
For a not-too-distant future year.
So, I just, I'm concerned because it, it rivals Maple Road. It's starting to rival Maple Road. Is there anything that can be done for that stretch for the residents this year?
I mean, I could take a look at it again was in terms of the, the contracted patching and what, what we can do in-house there.
Why don't you take a look at it? I think from the brief conversation that Councilwoman Mitchell and I had earlier this morning, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilwoman, but a particular concern there, Jeff, specifically at that intersection of Bennett and Mills. Right by the stop sign along that curb, it is in really, really atrocious condition.
Good.
So, if you could look at that, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Okay, friends, it appears that we do have consensus to move forward on the budget. This will become an action item that coming meetings. For those of you who still have questions or concerns or would like to meet with the staff to discuss any particular line items or sections of the budget, feel free to contact the city manager. And he and his staff would be delighted to give you the verification that you desire. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to return this working meeting.
So moved.
7:28. 7:28 in the end. Moved by Mayor Fortenfarr. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Folks say nay. Aye, savvity. Meeting is adjourned.